Testing, one, two.
This works. But it can only go so far.
Hello, hello?
This, this one doesn't.
There's, oh.
Can you hear us?
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
In the back. Try that one.
Testing, one, two, three.
Oh, that one doesn't work.
No. Testing, one, two, three. It sounds, well, hold on.
This is working.
Yeah.
All right.
I hereby call the Des Moines study session for August 23rd to order, and with that, I'll have Councilmember Pennington lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Let, let the record reflect that all seven council members are present, and now we will take comments from the public. Of course, comments from the public must be limited to the items of business on the study session, Agenda per Council Rule 10. I would just like to remind those participants that any personal, person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. And you will have three minutes to speak. The first person speaking is Ms. Victoria Andrews. We'll see if it works.
Okay. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Are we good?
You're good.
Okay. Thank you so much. As a customer who gets my water from District 54, I appreciate that the city and the district staff and board agree that collaborating, especially during an emergency, is not only a good idea but absolutely necessary to keep residents safe. I hope you all have gotten as creative as possible to pool your resources, knowing that infrastructure improvements are no doubt on the immediate horizon and will cost us taxpayers money, we understand. Meanwhile, I want to be sure that all suggestions have been considered, and if mine have been already, I thank you for your time tonight. In no particular order, they include: Send another postcard mailing to all District 54 customers with updated information on how to sign up for Code RED. Hopefully, their system has been corrected so that new signups, after emergencies, will receive notifications via landline, cell, and/or text and email. I did not after the last boil water advisory. In an emergency, the city should activate all existing mechanisms for reaching residents, including its website, social media, police, and block wash lists, and any other available email lists. The city should notify the appropriate members of the Citizens Advisory Committee who live within District 54 boundaries, I am one of them, and request our help getting the word out. While I have a printer, I'm not able to print large quantities of flyers, so if the city is willing to provide them, I would be happy to pick them up. An email to CAC members with a PDF would also enable us to get the word out to neighbors as another way to ensure as many people as possible know about the problem and how to reach the district for updates. The city should create an app for residents to download that would alert us to any emergency, not just ones like this. And finally, consort should have been involved as soon as the emergency was discovered, and should propose both technical and communication strategies that facilitate both entities' ability to work smoothly together for residents. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving on to Mr. Mike Nurdine.
I wish I was more prepared with some written notes, but as a business owner in the town, a restaurant owner in the town, I recall the last time we had a very similar situation. I think it was about 10 years ago. That situation was handled much differently. Communication was effective, and at the end of it, we submitted our loss report to the risk pool. Communication was excellent. The risk pool was responsive. They acted like they cared. And they took responsibility and paid. This time, we were asked to put together an extensive loss report. We submitted it, and we were treated like, well, crap, just to be honest. The gentleman in charge of the risk pool, Mr. Jason Barney, has been unresponsive, has kicked the can down the road, and has basically said, hey, this wasn't a real emergency. This was an overabundance of caution. Those words, "overabundance of caution," were not what the Health Department told me when I called the Health Department and said, hey, let's get this testing going, let's move this along, because everybody was blaming it on everybody else. They said, hey, don't be in a big hurry, because we're trying to protect you from killing someone with COVID. Well, Mr. Barney seems to think that wasn't ever a problem, and basically, hey, we aren't taking any responsibility for this as the risk pool for Water District 54, another water district. So I just want to let all of you know that we're basically being dissed by the risk pool. They are not being friendly, they aren't calling, they aren't communicative. They're basically saying, hey, call your own insurance, this isn't our deal. So that's why I'm here, to let you all know how I feel. My employees went for a week without any money, the busiest week of the year, Father's Day, June. And I'm sure there's a lot of other restaurant people, maybe they aren't here, maybe they just don't feel like it's worth it, because maybe they've tried to communicate with this guy, and they don't want to waste their time. So you should know what goes on, and Water District 54, we need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nurdine. All right. So the first, obviously, the first item of discussion is with Water District 54. Back, right after this, the boil order had occurred, I'd made a recommendation to council that one of the things is we have Councilmember Pennington lead a group of staff members to have discussions with Water District 54. I will say that I, from what I understand, my thanks goes to Ms. Councilmember Pennington for the hard work he put into this, and with no further ado, sir, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll read a couple of things, and then we'll get into, into the after-action report. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone involved in the process and the after-action review, folks in the Water District, from our other agencies. I'd like to thank Division Chief Shane Smith from South King Fire and Rescue, who I asked to facilitate the after-action report meeting. He's unable to be here this evening, as he's on an extended deployment in Maui with the FEMA Washington Urban Search and Rescue Task Force teams. To reiterate, the purpose of this whole process is to learn, find ways to cooperate, engage the appropriate agencies for support, and to assure to the greatest degree possible that we can avoid any recurrence of this situation. We're going to talk a lot today about emergency management protocols. It's important to remember that the modern emergency management standard procedures and actions were primarily formatted after 9/11, where it became exceedingly clear that there was a need for standardized, for a standardized communication model, a clear and defined chain of command, identification of elements of the emergency response, and cooperative agency actions. In terms of Water District 54 and other utility districts everywhere, emergency management is not only designed to respond to random events that occur, but also, and currently in today's age, we must now take into account the threats of sabotage and terrorism. Emergency management has become the watchdog for safety from wherever the threat occurs, whether it be natural or man-made. It is incumbent upon all of us to find effective ways to work together in our community. I will turn it over to our Emergency Management Director, Shannon Kirchberg.
I'm just going to read the introduction of the after-action report. A King County Water District 54 water sample tested on June 14th tested positive with E. coli. Water District 54 received the test results on June 16th of 2023. Water District 54 staff took repeated samples on June 16th of 2023. The repeat samples tested positive for coliform, not, no E. coli was present, requiring Water District 54 to chlorinate their water system and issue a boil water advisory. The boil water advisory on June 17th of 2023. Water District 54 contacted the Washington State Department of Health and assisted on a boil water advisory to customers and a press release to the media. Water District 54 sent the boil water advisory to the King County Office of Emergency Management for an alert King County Code RED warning to the public. Additionally, Water District 54 used door-to-door notifications, website updates, and social media posts to alert customers about the boil water advisory. Public Health Seattle and King County worked directly with food service establishments on June 18th of 2023 to ensure restaurants were aware of proper procedures due to the boil water advisory. The City of Des Moines Public Works Director was notified of the boil water advisory via email on June 18th, 2023. The Public Works Directly, Director immediately informed the City of Des Moines Chief Administrative Officer of the boil water advisory. The city assisted by posting and resharing information on social media, notifying the city's website, Facebook pages, and updating the Waterland blog with information when it became available. Water resampling took place at 24-hour intervals by Water District 54. When Washington State Department of Health approved lab results, Water District 54 rescinded the boil water advisory. The boil water advisory was rescinded on the afternoon of June 24th, 2023.
Thank you. At this point, I will turn it over to Eric Clark, the Water District Manager. He's going to go through some timeline of events to kind of put this into perspective. One thing I do want to add about this after-action report was this was a collaborative effort between the Water District and the city, and I'm very proud of that effort and very thankful for all of you that are here tonight and, and as we go through this report together. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, so in late, my name is Eric Clark, I'm the manager of King County Water District 54. In late May, we had a main break near 7-Eleven at the Light Bar, the Stoplight. The High Line Water District came in and repaired the water break for us. It was on a hybrid leak. Anyway, so...
Eric, I'm going, the mic wasn't on, I'm going to ask you to, to repeat what you said, I'm sorry, but so we could get that.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, it's, it's, so it's being recorded.
All right, so in late May, we had a water main break down at 7-Eleven. High Line Water District came in and they repaired the break for us, as we're a small-staffed water purveyor. And from there, the next samples that we did, we sample every week, we do investigative samples every week. Well, on the date, June 16th, was the Friday, our routine, we do six routine samples every month. And we hire Water Management Laboratory at Tacoma to do those routine samples. And then, in addition to that, we, as staff, do investigative samples every week. So when Water Management Lab did the samples on the Wednesday before the Friday, the 16th, one of the samples on Sixth Avenue showed that we had E. coli. Additional samples showed that we had coliform, but no E. coli in those other samples. You know, on this timeline, I'm just going to kind of go through it. If anybody wants to ask questions, go, feel free to, but I'm not going to go through every timeline on, on this. So on Saturday, we got a call from the lab that they verbally told us that the samples on Sixth Avenue were fine, which would entail us sending a 30-day mailer and chlorinating the system, but it wouldn't have required businesses to shut down or anything. It was just, here, we got a, we got a hit, and here we go. On, on any samples that we do, we have to do repeats. So the first samples that we got that had E. coli, and we have to do, immediately do follow-up samples, and for every sample site, we have to do three samples in that same vicinity. All right, so on Saturday, we got the verbal that the samples were all right, so then we, we were getting prepared to send out a mailer and chlorinate the system. As we're chlorinating, as we're turning on our chlorinators, we, later in the, the day, as you can see by reading the Saturday, that, that report that we got, the verbal that we received was inaccurate. Must have been when the microbiologist came to work at the lab on that Saturday, she said, no, there's coliform, no E. coli, but coliform, which now we have to notify. Now we're knocking on doors and telling the media and informing the city. At that point, as far as the restaurants are concerned, you know, it's, like Shannon said, it's a boil water advisory. That's what we're told to send to our residential customers. The restaurants are told a boil water order shut down. So there's kind of the two responses we're getting. So that was five hours later, after we got the verbal that we were okay, then at that point, we issued our, we, there's a template we used for the boil water advisory, which we have to add some verbiage in there. We add the verbiage, and then we got to get approval from the Department of Health. So this went, on Saturday, this went back and forth for quite some time, getting approval or, you know, and back and forth, and then, you know, some people may not be answering phones. So anyway, later that evening, okay, we got a boil water advisory. Sunday, we come in, first thing, Patty gets in at 6:00 and notifies the TV stations and social media. We start, again, we have volunteers and district staff are knocking on doors to notify and leave hangers on residential homes and apartments and whatnot. We're, we're not to touch businesses, that's all through Seattle, South King County Public Health. So that Saturday morning, the press release is given, we're walking around, the, all the, by nine, by 10:00, all the social media is notified of what's going on. And then, and Public Works Director was notified. Originally, I had notified the Public Works Director that it wasn't an emergency, but we were going to chlorinate the system, we had some issues. And then Sunday, it was, we have the boil water advisory. The Chief Administrative Officer of the city's notified by the Public Works Director. On we go, Monday, we're running samples. Now, every day, now, on the weekend, this is a holiday, Monday's a holiday, too. We opened up at 6:00 AM for the, the, opened the office up for phone calls and whatnot. In addition, at that time, we opened the High Line Entertide to receive their water based on a more consistent chlorine residual. So we can, and we can get that moving through the system, at the same time, we're trying to pull that water all the way from the Entertide, just over on 216th, all the way to Anthony's. Okay, so on Tuesday, we do a follow-up sample. We, we have chlorine all over the system, we're doing follow-up samples, and we're get, we're, we're, we, when we do sampling, it takes 24 hours to process the sample. Now, since we got bad samples, you have to have two sets drawn 24 hours apart. So you draw a sample, you get the results 24 hours later, you turn another set, and it's another 24 hours before you're, it's rescinded or whatnot. Anyway, so we send, we send the first set of samples in. They come back good on Wednesday, they come, that first set comes back good, and we drop another set off. 24 hours, at that, that evening, that Wednesday evening, Department of Health changed the rules on us. They said, no, we want a chlorine residual, a half a part per million, or a milligram per liter down at Anthony's. Virtually, that's, to me, I had to kind of negotiate that out, because that, it's, I can't, I couldn't see that happening, anyway. But the samples that we took that day were all good. The repeats that we came back, the, the first set we got back Wednesday, and then the repeats, the second set we took, came back Thursday, they were good, too. But now, like I said, the Department of Health wanted a new test. They wanted us to, because we're unchlorinated and unfiltered, we have manganese that we're introducing into the water system, which manganese will stick to the inside walls of the pipe, and then during high-velocity events or change in pressure, that manganese will break loose. But they wanted us to do an additional test that will count that manganese interference. The manganese will give you a false reading on your chlorine residuals, it'll actually make the chlorine look higher than it actually is. So we went through 48 hours of that before we were told, okay, the rules are changing, now we want you to do this extra sampling. Like I said, they came back good, that, so then, we start on Thursday, I believe it's Thursday, now we're doing, Thursday, we're doing the first set of the manganese interference tests. Those, 24 hours later, Thursday, Friday, they come back good, or negative for coliform, and we drop another set off. That led to Saturday, we get that second set back, and they were negative for coliform, which then we have to talk to the Department of Health, and they have to give us permission to rescind the boil water order. And really, that's about it. Any questions?
Go ahead.
So, Eric, let's see, a couple of things. First of all, so WML, they're in Tacoma, right?
Yes.
Okay, and every time you take a test, you have to select the, the samples to Tacoma?
Correct.
And they're like on the other side, they're not like right, it's, it's a drive?
Yeah, it's a half-hour drive.
The other thing is, and just to be clear, there was nothing in the water main break that seemed unusual? I mean, it was just a fairly...
No, it's a typical break, it looked like a settlement crack, I mean, there was no gaping hole or nothing like that, it just was a crack around the pipe. All we did was put a, it was like a clamp, we just put a clamp, which...
Yeah, but there was nothing, you know, unusual in the pipe that...
No. No.
And, and I guess the other thing is just that, the, this boil water notice is for, like, total coliform, right?
Yeah, you know, I mean, does anybody have questions about coliform? Because coliform is in the air, you're breathing it.
I just wanted to make a distinction because as to, because my understanding is that, like, coliform can come from the environment for...
Yeah, it floats in the air. Yeah, it's just the, coliform, they sample for coliform because that's a cheap... Yeah, it's just the coliform, they sample for coliform because that's a cheap, easy test. And if it shows coliform, then they test for E. coli or or other bacteria.
Got it. So it's a catchall.
Yeah, that's a cheap test.
To to um basically, you know, deal with it broadband and then you can culture something more detailed, you know, later on, but you want it's an ounce of caution.
Correct.
That's all I got. Thank you very much.
This is just for the which is for these guys? Go ahead. Yeah, Eric, I the uh Saturday morning phone call uh with the uh WML uh in District Four, when apparently we told it came back negative uh for coliform, which was a mistake and a mistake. How did that mistake happen?
Well, the the microbiologist wasn't there at the time and and I'm assuming, I I'm not positive of this, but the typical guy that I deal with, he wasn't there that day, so they had like a junior trainee or something. I I don't know, but he had verbalized to us that it was that those samples looked negative for coliform.
Okay, who was that phone call between?
Uh I believe, was it you, Patty?
No, it was you.
It was me? Oh, okay. Yeah, I was me and the the lab. Um then when the microbiologist came in, she indicated, you know, many of those cultures growing.
Can I add something to that? What happens is, oh, what happens is when you have two hits on the same station, that's what generates the notifications. What the lab told us was that Station Three, which is down on Sixth Avenue, the one that had the E. coli had no coliform on it. The other one still had coliform, which were double hits. But that would have only made it a male notification to everything, everybody. So really, what they miscommunicated was that the second test did not even have coliform. They just said it was good. So um that's what general, when you get two hits on the same site, that's what generates the notification. What the two hits are is what generates what level of notification it is. So they told us that the one that had the E. coli on it had nothing on it. It did have coliform on it. It didn't have E. coli on it, but it did have coliform on it.
But there was a previous one that did have E. coli on it, or was that a mistake as well?
No, that's what they said it was. That's why we had to retest it. But it came back with no E. coli, it came back with coliform.
You have to wait for the second test, the retest for confirmation.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that, but that's what I'm trying to figure out is what
So when we do a routine, when we do a routine sample, we have designated sample stations. We pull every month out of those same sample stations for that area. Now, if we get a coliform or an E. coli hit at that station, we have a sample station north and south or east and west of that particular station. And though all three of those sites are sampled on repeat samples as well as all sources.
All right, but that doesn't say what we want that morning and why you
Well, that that was a a lab, that was a lab mistake verbalizing to us, you know. We pro we called them and asked, how's it going? How's it going? You know, because we're kind of curious and want to wrap this up. You know, an underlying uh person at the lab basically couldn't read the thing right, or the microbiologist is the one who has to confirm that there's coliform or E. coli present.
Yeah, they just gave you misinformation.
They gave us misinformation and and then uh we ended up getting information um emailed to us several hours later. So then we knew that that the information was wrong and had changed.
Right, and that was from the microbiologist?
Yeah, it comes from it comes from the lab. Yeah.
Okay, well, but there are clearly there's a distinction between
Between who looks, yeah, there's different people who look at them. Yeah.
Well, well, I I would say that we don't actually know. This is where our assumption of what happened, but we have reported this miscommunication to the Department of Health. And they have told us that they are very concerned that this happened. And we were on the phone with uh the drinking water coliform person in King County when we were getting both the verbal results and the written results back. And she did the same thing that we did. Oh, well, you got the verbal results, they're good. And so she was like, oh, we're we're fine. Just send out the thirty day letter letter and you'll be fine. And so it did put that five hour delay and a total game change plan when the actual report came back on paper that was different than what was told us over the phone. And so I do hope, but it is in the court on the side of the Department of Health to follow up with the lab.
I assume this has been communicated to the lab as well.
Yeah, the Department of Health simply says, no, in the future, we need to wait for the paperwork to come through. Rather than
That's not my question. My question is
That they they have communicated.
They have communicated this back to the lab to that's what I was trying to trying to kind of understand is how that got started. And the the boil water advisory, that did not go out until much later on Saturday, correct?
Correct.
Or was it Sunday?
Sunday morning.
Well, they the I came in, Patty was in the office and it was like three thirty or something. And they're still talking about, I mean, she was on the phone with someone from the Department of Health and they were still talking about that letter that we would send out. And at that point, then things started to change. And by four o'clock, I remember she said, oh, it's three minutes before. Uh it's like, oh, okay, we need to do a boil water advisory now. And so and then that starts a process of um you you have the template of what they require you say, but you have to put your information of what's happened into their template. They have to approve it. Uh then there's a press release, so that also needs to get approved. And so that all happened between four o'clock and midnight uh on Saturday night. And then uh the information went out. Uh once, you know, once they got approved, Patty was making copies and uh then we had a plan for the morning to start notifying people. And so um the press the press release went out in the morning. Uh we had people knocking on doors. We notified everybody. You have about twenty four hours to notify people. And by just a little bit after four o'clock, we had knocked on everybody's door, put flyers up every place that we could. There's a few apartment buildings that are inaccessible. We put things on outside where we could. Uh again, the they tell you, don't, you know, don't talk to the businesses, don't talk to the restaurants. That's the the other folks to do that. But uh we had people out knocking on the whole district. So
All the residential customers that have informed that advice.
They they had a letter, yeah, either a a knock on the door and a talk talk to and handed a letter or a letter uh put on their door. Yeah.
So if you've got guys, um people knocking on doors for residential, who talks to the businesses? And tells them that there's issues?
Seattle and uh South King County, Seattle Public Health.
So did they send a team out to talk to the businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
We we know that I I know that Sunday morning, uh we heard from some of the restaurants, they like they had people at their restaurant at, say, eleven o'clock or eleven thirty. So uh they got a packet, which we didn't get to see for until just recently, we finally saw what they they got. But
They received.
Uh yeah, we we didn't know what they received, but they had people out and talking to the restaurants.
And how long after the notice was, did King County respond with telling restaurants?
They were there
The Sunday morning.
First thing Sunday morning.
First thing Sunday morning. Okay.
Yeah.
Ten AM, they got it at ten AM.
Yeah.
They came in and said, Father's Day?
No.
Not happening.
Uh Deputy Mayor, we'll we'll we'll
Uh I have a a couple of more more next, yes, type of questions. Is this a good um juncture for that? Are you is it
Let's wait till we're we're
Further along, probably good. So uh I understood that there there was a space in time where there was just no communication from the lab over the holiday. Is that true? There just nobody was available to do work on Sunday and Monday? Is there some level of emergency that you know of or that any of us know of where that where that gets overridden? Where somebody says, no, we we really need this to happen. It's a public safety issue. Somebody needs to go to the lab on a Sunday or holiday?
I don't know. I yeah, I don't know how they work that.
And that I I guess that is a good question to be answered at some point because there is going to be a level where everything stops on a Sunday or holiday and issues get dealt with in the lab or somewhere. And so it'd be nice to know what that level is and when to raise it to that and if this was bad or not. But I don't know how to answer that question. Is there something with emergency management showing or?
I I think that's probably one of the things that we'll we'll have a follow up on and some of the communications and the availabilities. In fact, it's one of our recommendations um on holidays and weekends.
Yeah, that was my question.
Thank you. Um two quick things, hopefully. So basically, uh but Department of Health, they they take care of the commercial interest, but they don't provide resources to you with regard to your, you know, the rest of your customers, residential. Would that be fair to say?
Yes, that's fair to say.
Well, I want to clarify that there's two different entities that we're dealing with. One is the Department of Health, the statewide agency that's working with us.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm in Seattle.
Yeah, Seattle, King County Public Health is the one dealing with restaurants and
But but they don't offer any kind of, you know, assistance to to you being a small district, you know, to help you get the word out or
Not to my knowledge because their emphasis is on food safety.
Yeah.
And they are the ones that provide licensing for businesses in Seattle, King County, but not for water district.
Yeah, yeah, they're just bigger. So uh and and the other thing is, I just feel it just, I wanted to thank you for showing up. It's very gracious of you to take your evening. And I just did it's always a little cautious about, you know, just being in the inquisition kind of, if you know, for lack of a better term. So thank you so much for taking the time. And that's it.
Hey, Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, I'd I'd just like to kind of piggyback after um on Deputy Mayor Buxton's comments. So has there been s- since there wasn't um since there wasn't an emergency person or an on call person available in the testing agency, which in my field of business is construction, and if we're actively discharging into a system or have a challenge with our water system on a site, the environmentalist that we employ has an on call person and an on call testing agency to test rapidly. So is there any motion to move for, is is there any movement going forward to employ a testing agency that has an on call dependable person to do the testing and to move forward at a rapid pace?
We can take samples. It we're at the mercy of the lab.
E- exactly. And I'm not talking about your samples. I'm talking about the lab with an on call person to provide on call abilities to process those samples in a timely manner to protect the citizens.
Haven't really come to any uh resolution on it, but we have had discussions whether we have to pay for the person to remain on call through the weekend or whatnot. But we have no resolution on that.
Thank you.
All right, um oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
We'll spill something before we're done. Um so real quick, I just want to ask you guys about the update process. So my understanding is that you'd be responsible updating the residents. And of course, the city and other government entities that you'd be associated with. And the Health Department is responsible for speaking to and updating the the like businesses, particularly the restaurants. Is that correct? So can two, it's a two part question in a way. Is can you tell me about your update process as you go through the week and the incidences, how you're updating the residents in the city? And then also, if you know, what would be the Health Department's update process to update the businesses?
I don't know. May Patty might be better to answer that.
Well, we can't, I can't speak to the resident, um the restaurant stuff because I don't know if it was, you know, updated, generated by you know, them calling or if they actually got uh a number to call, an emergency number to call for updates or not. I don't know, because I know that their updating was based on what was happening with us, obviously. So and during the week, as far as updating people, I mean, we were updating, you know, our website and the Department of Health. And these are the flyers that the restaurants got, and we just got those. And so they did have different verbiage on theirs than what the Department of Health made us notify people with. Um as far as during the week goes, we were doing updates on the different social medias on our webpage. The Waterman blog, Waterland blog, I mean, just a number of different social media things. Um we did the code red thing for the initial thing. There was a glitch that was not our glitch. It was the King County Emergencies uh Management's glitch that they didn't pick up any of the new um the six hundred people that joined. They didn't pick any of those up on the recall. So the people that joined never did get the second phone call. So but that was something on their end, not on ours.
They'll they'll get the next one.
They'll get the next, they'll get the next one.
They figured out their glitch.
They figured out their glitch. They didn't hit reset to add any new numbers. They just sent it to the same the same group of people that they sent out originally to. So um as far as updates go, I mean, our phone was going nuts. We did social media. We did the press releases.
Website.
Our website.
It's a little hard when there's no no news. And even though we know that we're passing those tests, you know, we can't really say, oh, we passed one test tomorrow, we should be good because we just don't know that. And and then they
That out.
Yeah, we can't say that. And then they changed the rules on us, which we it was total blindside. We might have done things a little bit differently if we'd known those rules to start with.
We kind of started saying the first test came back good, but then between the first and second test is when the Department of Health said, hmm, now we want you to do this.
Which took, it's it added two extra days that that we had. And they they'd given us a packet of things, papers that said what we needed to do. And it's like, you know, I I said, so you you gave us this packet and and we did everything on here? And we still, you still can't pass us? Oh, no. Now we got to do this. So we we were trying our hardest and nobody likes that situation. Um Patty was, you know, there the whole time. We we had extra people on the phones. We have twenty four hour uh phone answering anyway. And so there was a pile, every day, there was a pile of messages to to uh call. And so they did a great job on uh just keeping people informed that had called in. The phone was ringing nonstop and people were answering the phone nonstop.
All right, um now we'll go into the after action report overview. So I'll I'll read part of that. And then at the at the end of all of this, then there'll be another opportunity for questions. The after action report overview, City of Des Moines Emergency Operations Center uh compiled this report as a compilation of information uh derived at an after accident incident review. The review took place on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three and included the following partners, King County Water District Fifty Four, Washington State Department of Health and the City of Des Moines. These agencies participated in the response and communications to the public during the Water District Fifty Four Boil Water Advisory. The information was gathered by the City of Des Moines Director of Emergency Management with the assistance of the city's clerk, City Clerk's Office. The recommendations in this after action report should be viewed and considerable attention needs to be uh needs to be uh provided um for for providing safety, clean and reliable water to the residents and the businesses of Des Moines, which are serviced by Water District Fifty Four. Each organization should review the recommendations and determine the most appropriate action and time needed for implementation. So the incident was a King County Water District Fifty Four, June two thousand and three boil water advisory. The participating agencies were King County Water District Fifty Four, Water Management Laboratories, Washington State Department of Health, Water District 54, Water Management Laboratories, Washington State Department of Health, Seattle King County Department of Health, and the City of Des Moines. The duration of the event was from Friday, June 16, 2023, to Saturday, June 24, 2023. The focus was on response and recovery. Type of incident, again, a Boil Water Advisory notification. In your packets, you'll see the rough boundaries to the north. The Water District is a boundary at roughly 213th Street, to the east, 13th Avenue, to the south, South 230th Street, and to the west by the Puget Sound. So we'll go into, the next section, we'll go into the strengths, the things that we identified as strengths within this response. The Water District 54 has an emergency response plan that details steps to be taken when a Boil Water Advisory Notice is required. Water District 54 issued a Boil Water Advisory with the assistance of the Washington State Department of Health. Water District 54 has a strong water testing procedure in place to fulfill local, state, and federal requirements. These tests ensure that staff, commissioners are consistently aware of the water system quality. Water District 54 began coronating the water June 17, 2023. Water District 54 worked with King County Office of Emergency Management to send a Boil Water Advisory Notice, Alert, through King County Code Red, as some of you may know it, to customers on June 18, 2023. Water District 54 organized a door-to-door notification of the Boil Water Advisory on June 18, 2023. Notifications were completed in eight hours. Water District 54 issued a press release with the district map outlining the impacts, impacted area. Social media information was clear, detailed, and updated frequently by both the Water District and the City of Des Moines. Water District 54 updated their webpage for customers daily. Water District 54 made cases of bottled water available at the district office. And Water District 54 worked with the Waterland Blog on an alert King County communication outreach campaign encouraging residents to sign up for emergency alerts and warnings. So those were some of the strengths that we had identified. Now some areas of improvement that we identified.
Excuse me, Councilmember Pennington. I have a question.
Well, we'll have questions at the end of this.
Well, this...
We'll have questions at the end of this, thank you. Areas of improvement. The sharing of information between the partner agencies during the incident. Okay, so the King County, again, the agencies were King County Water District 54, Washington State Department of Health, Public Health Seattle, King County Water Management Laboratories, and the City of Des Moines. Another area of improvement, verbal notification from Water Management Lab was not accurate and conflicted with the written report received. This caused a five-hour delay in the customer notification process. Water District 54 did not reach out to the City of Des Moines to request emergency aid as outlined in the King County Water District 54 Emergency Response Plan. The City of Des Moines will engage with the Director of Emergency Management and/or designee to respond to situations that have the possibility of escalating into events requiring Emergency Operations Center support. City of Des Moines' Emergency Manager, Emergency Management, Emergency Operations Center, and other emergency responses, response resources were unknown by the Water District. Restaurant notifications were handled by Public Health Seattle, King County. King County Water District 54 was communicating with the Washington State Department of Health. Public Health Seattle, King County did not provide Water District 54 of a copy of the restaurant boil water information. So then we'll move on into the recommendation area. And Shannon, if you'll take that.
Thank you, Councilmember. So recommendations that came out of reviewing the after-action report. The City of Des Moines will hold regularly scheduled meetings with our community partners to discuss emergency management issues, training, partners, and resource availability during times of emergency. When Water District 54 is updating notifications on their website, they'll ensure that the messaging is date and timestamp. Water District 54 will work with the Department of Health to streamline the notification approval process with special attention to be paid to weekends and holidays. Partners will conduct situational awareness meetings during incidents with all key stakeholders to create horizontal and diagonal information flows. Water District 54 will create templates of possible alerts and warnings to the public and have them pre-approved by the Department of Health. City of Des Moines Emergency Management will work with partners to develop Incident Command System, Emergency Operations Center, National Incident Management System Training Recommendations. The City of Des Moines Emergency Management will work with partners to develop Incident Command System, Emergency Operations Center, and National Incident Management System Training Recommendations for elected officials. So the conclusions and the next steps of the after-action report, the City of Des Moines will reach out to local partner agencies to ensure that they are aware of how the City of Des Moines can assist in times of emergency. The Emergency Operations Center is a resource for partners as early as possible in any emergency situation. The City of Des Moines Director of Emergency Management will set up regular emergency management meetings with partners. The City of Des Moines Director of Emergency Management will provide training recommendations for partners on Incident Command System, Emergency Operations Center, and the National Incident Management System. The City of Des Moines Director of Emergency Management will provide Incident Command System, Emergency Operation, and National Incident Management System Training Recommendation to partner board members, commissioners, and volunteers. The City of Des Moines will include partners in all community outreach events to help engage the whole community. The City of Des Moines will create a process for 24/7 contact with the City of Des Moines' Emergency Management Department.
Hey, I thought at this point, I'd like for Director Kirchberg to talk about a little bit about Emergency Operations Center.
Sure.
And at the end of that, then there'll be time for your questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. My name is Shannon Kirchberg. I'm the Director of Emergency Management and Workplace Safety for the City of Des Moines. In order to talk about an Emergency Operations Center, we first need to talk about the National Incident Management System, which is acronym NIMS. So it is a standardized approach to incident management that was developed by the United States Department of Homeland Security. This came about after the attack on the World Trade Center on September 11. If you'll all remember, President Bush issued a Homeland Security Presidential Directive Number Five, which put the Homeland Security Department in charge of creating an incident management system that would allow first responders to communicate and structure in a cohesive way to respond to large incidents. And this is where the National Incident Management System came. It actually was adopted out of California. It's what the fire service used in Southern California to respond to wildfires. So they took that structure and built it out into the National Incident Management System, which was established in March of 2004 and adopted nationwide. So within this system, there are multiple operational systems. As you can see, there's the Incident Command System, which is actual boots on the ground at the incident. The Multi-Agency Coordination System, which we call the MAC Group, which is where all the different organizations send their decision-makers so that they can have a cohesive working relationship in making policy. And then the Emergency Operations Center, which I'm going to go into in more detail. An Emergency Operations Center is a physical location that is separate from the Incident Command Post. So it does not get involved in the minute-by-minute reaction to what's going on at the incident site. It supports the onsite response by providing external coordination and securing additional resources when those resources are near depletion or forecasted to be completely depleted. It serves as a critical role in every phase of emergency management. Even once the incident on the ground has concluded and everybody has gone home, the EOC will stay open through the final bill being paid. It is the hub for all coordination during an incident to facilitating and directing recovery and cleanup. An Emergency Operations Center, it doesn't manage the incident, we don't get involved in the incident, we're just an arm to the Incident Command so that we can help coordinate things. We do a lot of what-if statements. So we're looking into the future, not at the incident itself, but trying to project out. So the City of Des Moines EOC, or the Emergency Operations Center, is actually located up at South King Fire Station 67. The EOC, or the Emergency Operations Center, is staffed by City of Des Moines staff that go through extensive NIMS training. It's hours of training for anybody to be authorized to have a FOB to the Emergency Operations Center. You have to be credentialed in order to get through the door. Other agencies that have permanent desks are South King Fire and Rescue, as well as Medic One. But then depending on the incident, we invite additional partners in to sit in the EOC and collaborate with us. The EOC, or the Emergency Operations Center, can be activated during times of emergency by the city manager or designee, the chief of police, and also our fire chief with South King Fire. The City of Des Moines EOC is also available for partner support. So emergency aid requests can be sent to the City of Des Moines. Partner agencies can request aid or support during any emergency, preferably in the very beginnings, so that we start watching it early instead of coming in at the end. You can do this by contacting the Director of Emergency Management. We provide inter-agency coordination for executive decision-making. Basically, we bring all the decision-makers into the room to make cohesive decisions together and support each other for the incident response and the recovery operations. We obtain situational awareness. So the EOC is very good at bringing people in. We watch social media, we're watching the television stations, we're watching emails, we're pulling all of the information that we're getting from the scene into one area. We analyze it, process it, come up with a clear, concise message, and send it out to all the partners involved so that everybody is spreading the same word. Through situational awareness, we operate what's called the Joint Information Center, which is staffed by PIOs from each partner agency. And we work together to ensure that we have one direct, accurate, and consistent message. Preparedness is a shared responsibility, not just the responsibility of the government, individuals, families, businesses, faith-based organizations, community organizations, schools, academia, media outlets, everybody needs to prepare. And this is our national preparedness goal. It's up on the screen, a secure, resilient nation with the capabilities required across the whole community to prevent, protect against, mitigate, respond to, and recover from the threats and hazards that pose the greatest risk. And this is perfect because September is Emergency Preparedness Month, so now is the time to get prepared for any possible emergency.
Thank you, Director. Now I'll open it up for questions. Deputy Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Jean, you were first, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm curious, am I overlooking something? But in the people who were participating in the after-action report, was South, Seattle, King County Health did not participate in the after-action review?
No. Information and contacting them has been difficult at best. And so there wasn't, we felt we had enough information from them at that point. And we, no, they weren't invited to the after-action review. We did talk about it, and looking back, we would have brought them in and got a little bit more information from them. But as you can tell, getting them to cooperate is extremely difficult. We were part of, some of our thoughts were, you know, if we had the EOC, sometimes that access is easier. So I don't know, it's something that we're going to try to have to work with them on their response as well.
Look, okay, is that recommendation included here in, within the recommendations here that we do establish a better response there? Because we're talking about the major, the major people that were infected are the businesses, and yet all of the notification of them was supposed to be through Seattle.
Right. And that's, to cut to the chase, it was an oversight that we, we had started this communication, we started this evaluation process, and we didn't invite them. And that's something that we should have invited. We'll work with, with King County Public Health through the Emergency Operations Center to look at, in the future, what we can do better. This is one of our lessons that we've learned, is some of the communication.
Okay, should that be reflected then in the, after, the areas of improvement and the recommendations?
Yeah, I think we can probably add in there that, that we'll, you know, reach out to all of the partners that are there. So, that's a lesson to be learned.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Great report. In regard to next steps and some of the, both the recommendations section and the conclusion of next steps, is there a grid or a framework already regionally for partnerships that work together across agencies? Like, you know, earlier on, I talked about forming ILA somehow that would put whether you use franchise agreements or not, but I think possibly it's more like a separate ILA or something. Can you talk about that?
Yeah. So the question, as I understand it, is there a framework in place that brings in different partner agencies? And the one that I'm most familiar with, and Shannon, there may be some that you're familiar with, the one I'm most familiar with is the Greater Federal Way Emergency Management Group. And that's the City of Federal Way, St. Francis Hospital, the Lake Haven Water and Sewer District, the Federal Way School District, and I'm missing somebody, but South King Fire and Rescue. And those agencies work together through an inter-local agreement that, that they support each other in emergency management, in that there's, if one of them has an incident, and they activate the EOC, that the rest of the agencies come and support that. They also do training together. They've made two trips back to Emmitsburg, Maryland, one of them six years ago. The City of Des Moines went along. And the City of Des Moines is, while they're not a member agency, they're still a partner in that Emergency Operations Center. So there, there's some, you know, because of the, because of, the fire district overlaps into two major cities. So when I was the chief, I brought, I brought the City of Des Moines into that because of that. And so, so that's an example that I'm most familiar with. I'm sure there may be some others. And Shannon, you may have an answer for that.
Yeah, there's several cities that are represented by Puget Sound Fire for emergency management. And they come together as a collective with their partners once a year. It's not frequently throughout the year, but they do come together and make their plans for the coming year and talk about tabletop exercises and other exercises that they might be working on.
I would like to make a recommendation or ask permission about something, get some recommendations about verbiage. But to bring this subject to the table at the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee meeting, maybe the beginning of the year, the first, first or second meeting of the year, just to bring this discussion up about the framework for a functional partnership in our review in the City of Des Moines.
If I, yeah, if I may. A couple of things to remember. There is one other resource, and we've been very engaged with that, and that's King County Emergency Operations Center that spans across the county. I think it's important to remember that we stood up the Emergency Operations Center primarily for COVID. And we spent three years, the first year and a half, in daily briefings, daily briefings with all the partner agencies. So we've already demonstrated an effectiveness in being functional in an emergency. So if we want to formalize that in some manner, or there's some other aspect to it, that's certainly worth investigating. That's primarily Shannon's job.
Actually, those calls still take place every single Thursday. So there's still an all-hands King County Emergency Management Call for all partners every single Saturday at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
So I would like to ask the, if we can just at least put this on the work plan and the discussion, bring these, these to the table. and, and the discussion, bring these, these to the table, and, and have a discussion about inviting our local partners for that.
Councilmember, if, if, one thing I think, you know, however council wants to address this is fine. But I think one of the, the most important aspects of NIMS and ICS and the emergency response is that it's specifically designed to not have electeds engaged in the emergency management process, especially in the PIO role, because they, they just, the danger is, and you see in other cities, where electeds can frame things that may be political rather than accurate. In the middle of an emergency, you want accurate information you can count on. So, it's usually separated. So, just to keep that in mind, we'll do whatever you have in mind for the Public Safety Committee. But I just want to emphasize that typically, the role of the electeds is when they're requested to approve policies, approve budgets, and be aware of what's taking place. But the management of the issue, or whatever is going on, is through the incident commander and the Emergency Operations Center.
Right, so, it would just be, I would, then, then my role as an elected would be to request an update? Or tell me, tell me about this, how are these recommendations coming along? How is our partnership coming along? So, that's, I guess that's what I'd like to be doing.
I'll, I'll support that, that we add it to the 2024 work plan.
Okay.
For Public Safety Emergency Management.
I support that.
And I would just prepare a list of questions or something, I'll touch base with Jan. All right? Then I do have another question, but I can defer to somebody else.
Thank you. So, four hopefully quick things. I'm interested to know if the city has any kind of ability to advocate for businesses with regard to insurance, the risk pool, and so forth. I don't know where that falls into this, but.
That's probably a, a question.
I thought it was going to be my question as well.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there. Two things for whoever's website, I think there should be a better map. I heard, if I had a dime for every time a resident asked me, "Am I in Water District 54?" And I'm like, you know, "Don't you have a bill?" or whatever. But if you had a map where you could simply type in your address and it said, "No", I think that wouldn't be the worst idea in the world. I also think there wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a little page that explains the wonders of the interaction between manganese and chlorine. Because people lose their minds and they don't understand, you know, that the, I, I think you know where I'm going with that. The main thing is, in 2013, I asked the mayor at the time, a simple question, "Can we issue the equivalent of an Amber Alert?" And if we can't, I would like the council to consider putting that on our legislative agenda. Because I would note that basically, the, the go-to-get-a-boil-water notice is 10:15 on Saturday, June 17th. And to my mind, somebody should be able to press a button and hit everybody in the affected area at about 10:16.
Well, I, councilmember, I'll have Director Kirschberg answer that. We, we did have some discussion about that and about notification, and, and there, there's a, it's a huge discussion. And so, I, she has some really good insight on that, and, and, and so, go ahead.
So, Code RED or Alert King County is what it's called in King County. It's also On Solve. It comes across as three different names. They are in the process of updating it. And within the next three months, they should have a whole new database that'll make it easier to alert residents. However, it is a database, and it is only as good as the information that is put in the system. So, it is on the onus of the person that has the information to make sure that their information is correct. So, my recommendation is that everybody goes to Alert King County, reviews the information that is in the system for you personally, to make sure that your phone numbers are listed, not just your cell phone number, but your work cell phone number, your work direct line, your personal email, your work email. You should have a minimum of three contact points in that system, or you're not going to get the notification.
I, I, I get it, and, and that's really good and everything, but I just, I want to, you know, at the risk of, this should not be optional. Okay, this is public safety, and I've said it before, if it were a child, we're talking one life, it's not optional. Okay? If there really was something in the water, you know, and you're talking 1,000 people, that should not be optional. And if it's not legally possible, we should do everything in our power to make it so. That's just what, how I feel about it. Thank you.
I wanted to comment about the contact of folks who said, "We're not sure what district we're in." And I have, initially have had the exact same reaction, like, "Oh, my gosh, don't you get a bill?" But what I've found through this time period is that folks who live in a rental property, in an apartment building, their billing is commercial, they're a member of an HOA that handles the water bill, that goes to one address. And it does not go to all of the residents inside. And we don't have a list of all the residents inside those multifamily units. And so, unfortunately, there's a lot of people who never see a bill, and they actually don't know perhaps which water district they're in. And there are many folks who don't know how many water districts serve Des Moines either, which adds to part of the confusion and part of the emphasis that we had of going door to door. So, that's how you try and counteract and, and reach people as quickly as you can, is by physically knocking on doors. We put up flyers in laundry rooms. We, I went through somebody's gate to go to houses that were on beaches that I didn't know existed, and it was very educational. But I think that combination of communication channels, whether it was online, whether it was text, or whether it was in person, is meant to blanket as many of those addresses as possible. Thank you.
Director Kirschberg, you have.
And I would add to that, that like we talked about in the final slide, preparedness is every person's responsibility. So, I would highly encourage everybody within my voice to spread this to three people and have those three people tell three people. You can Google "Get Ready King County", and there is a PDF that walks you through all of the steps to identify who your water district is, who your power company is, what you need to pack for emergency response, all of your alerting systems, how to register, what numbers you've put in there. It's a PDF, you download it to your computer, it's fill-in-the-blank, it's super easy to use, and you update it every year. But it is your responsibility to make sure that you are getting the alerting.
Okay, Mayor, you had a.
Thank you for the report. I thought you guys, you guys really worked the problem, and I just really appreciate that. I just want to make that statement first. I, I, I definitely agree with, in adding the recommendation that not only we find a way to work with the health department to update the businesses, but also after the event is how we can assist them in getting compensation and getting support and so forth like that. I know that the money we provided was a big help. The other one, I agree, it's, it's going to be, take everybody's effort to get people to fill out the information. I think we can use the currents, I was just talking to the Chief Operations Officer or Administration Officer, I'm promoting you by the minute, aren't I? About, about the possibility that we could add something like that to the currents to help and assist, because that's probably one of the publications that gets the most. But I do, I agree with you, one of our issues, and it is issues of every city, is your population, whether they're documented or undocumented, is a reality we deal with, where they might think that they're getting identified and so forth, and might not want to file. And that's unfortunate, because these are really designed to inform and help everybody. I also thank you guys for the update on the condos and some of the apartments and some of those things, where it is a point where one may get the water bill, or they pay it out of their funds, but as means to communicate to the rest of the individuals, that's problematic. So, I'd like to see a solution, whether there's a designee that they keep updated or something like that, that there could be an update as well. But to your point, it is the responsibility of each of those organizations, covenants, housing groups, whatever it might be, to, to assist in that too. So, I guess, any way, any way, any way and every way we can communicate is all we can do. But we don't have the town newspaper anymore, so there's 37 ways to be marginally effective, right? But maybe in all, we can do a little bit more.
Go ahead.
I, I wanted to revisit the, the first question that my colleague talked about, the, the, the risk pool in the last report. And that was a little distressing to hear the, the public comment there. So, I just wanted to know if there was, if you had any advice or comments about the difficulty it sounds. I don't know if that's a unique report out, that Mr., it sounds like Mr. Varney is maybe having trouble with. So, I'm not sure. So, if you could comment on that, and possibly about next steps, or how to encourage our businesses, or.
I'd be happy to, thank you. We are working with the risk pool to have them understand our business a little bit better. There was a great deal of education that was provided to them. The difference between what in a boil-water advisory is that went out to residential customers and the "stop-work-don't-serve-food" notice that went to businesses that serve food were two separate notifications. And it seems like initially, they were unaware of this. And we had multiple conversations with them to try and get them to understand that the advisory was not for restaurants. I think that after we involved our legal counsel, that things should be going smoother at this point. But it did take an extra level of advocating on the behalf of the businesses to say, "We want you to understand the difference between how it impacted residential customers and how it impacted restaurants." I would say that there's also a difference between now and the previous boil-water advisory that happened in, in 2013, because the Department of Health did not conclude that there was a person or incident at fault for this boil-water advisory. So, unfortunately, an insurance company goes, "Well, no fault was found, so how are we responsible?" And we had, again, the chance to educate them and say, "That may be true, and it is backed up by the Department of Health, but how is it that we can make our businesses whole?" And I think that after, again, some advocating and some strong conversations with them repeatedly, that they have gotten the message. And so, we have asked currently that folks turn in information, and they've asked for packets to show what the expenses were, what the losses were, so that they could be reviewed by the pool. And hopefully, if folks complete the information that was required, and was also, those packets were also required in 2013 as well. So, that, that process is the same a little bit, in terms of what kind of documentation was required. And we do hope that they will be resolved quickly. I'm glad to hear that folks are letting us know what their experience is like, because we've had similar experience with them. And that will strengthen our resolve in our next conversation with them as well.
So, if people ask, if I'm here, me, okay, I'm out and about, and somebody asks, do you, do you contact your commissioner, contact the water department, and they will have updates for you in regard to how to?
I would love for people to call me and get claims.
Okay.
I have only had four people submit.
Wow.
They, they have time to submit still, it's not, it, it, they have quite a bit of time, so we're not worried about that aspect.
Direct people?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Really quick, because if you don't mind, I, I need to add on to that because of this discussion. Now, how, how are they being educated about the, the claim process to contact you through the insurance company?
Yeah, if the restaurants call us, then I'll email them. The, I have the claim packet. I will email it, mail it to them, however they want to get it. Then they need to return it to me, and I will scan it and send it, or send the original to the insurance company.
So.
So, we each have a copy.
A way to get the information to them.
I can email it to them, they just.
Yeah, I think you've got a business list, particularly restaurants and so forth, that would be great.
I do, I just need to know who was the eating establishments, you know what I mean? I have a whole business thing, and I'm not sure.
Well, there may be, there may be hair salons and so forth that are also affected, because there was a lot of cancellations, because they wouldn't, didn't want to wash their hair.
True, and they may be affected. A lot of them called, and we had told them that, you know what, as far as, as long as you're not drinking it, you're okay. So, that's just it. We don't know who totally shut down, except for the restaurants. But as far as any other businesses go, we don't, we don't know.
Yeah, my thought was to get a list of all of them, and then the insurance company, of course, can determine who's, who's, you know, eligible for the, the money and who's not.
Right.
Okay, oh, the city has those lists, so we could help provide if you needed that, as far as types of businesses and things like that.
Yeah, because we don't have, like the strip malls, one bill.
Yes.
Doesn't go to each individual person. So, we don't have all those individual contacts, just like apartments.
Okay. Well, it sounds like Shannon or Chief Administrative Officer can figure that out for you.
Okay, and Councilmember Nutting, you have a question?
I just, really quick, Director Kirschberg. For you, if, if the EOC was, e- either the King County or the Des Moines EOC was contacted and, and put into action, you, would, would the EOC been able to help out with, A, notifying businesses about actually what the order is? And B, finding a different testing agency laboratory to, to actually come online and assist in the, the three days that they were unavailable?
We, the.
Excuse me, sorry, two days.
If the, if the EOC would have been activated, it would have been activated more as a communication hub to bring all of the PIOs together to look, to take in all of the information and put out a consistent message through all of the partner agencies, so that that messaging that was going out was clear, concise, and everybody had the same message. As far as the lab goes, I'm sure that I would be able to reach out, or the EOC would be able to reach out to find other labs to work with. But I believe that's something that's managed by the Department of Health, not the water district. Is, am I correct?
No.
Yeah, so, that, I mean, we could help, but I think that, that, that list would go through the Department of Health, not the EOC.
Thank you.
All right, with that, that concludes this portion of, of the after-action report. We've, we've had, you know, there was three requests by council. One was to ask me to, to be a part of this. The other one was to, to do an after-action report. And then the third part that we'll transition to is the economic impacts. They'd asked the city manager to, to take a look at that. So, what I'll do now is, one, thank you all again for, for coming together and, and working together so that we could find solutions and identify problems and, and begin a dialogue that, that will be better for our citizens and our businesses as we go forward into the future. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn the meeting back.
I would like to say, and, and I'm not speaking on behalf of my commissioners, you'll have to ask them, but I would like to say thank you very much to Councilmember Pennington and Director Kirschberg for setting a tone that was really collaborative and welcoming in our after-action meetings. And I think it really helped that we all were able, through your guidance, to rise above some of the past negativity that we've had between our two agencies and focus on what our core commonalities were, which is the care of our residents and making sure that they had access to the resources that they needed. And so, I want to say thank you, because those, the tenor and the tone of those meetings were very different than the other meetings that we've had, and it made a tremendous difference in terms of the building of that positive relationship.
Thank you, Commissioner. With this, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and I'd also entertain a five or seven-minute break.
Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break, but before we do, I, I, I share your sentiments. I knew Councilmember Pennington was the right person for the job, and I appreciate you guys being here and look forward to figuring this out. We all want safe drinking water, we want our businesses to operate fully functionally, and we want to make sure there's an infrastructure that's. And we want to make sure there's an infrastructure that's going to be prepared for our future. And I know that that's what you want too. So, with that, we will take a five-minute break, which will put us back at 7:35.